Discussion and budget presentation of a Davis County Fiscal Court 2017-2018 budget to order. If you'll bow your heads, please. Our Heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful day, this wonderful spring day, and all that goes with it as I drove through the east and central part of the county this morning. And Commissioner, I'm going to go through the west side lest you think I left you out this afternoon. Kentucky truly is a beautiful state, and Davis County in particular is a beautiful county to be in at this time of year. Thank you for the weather that we have received so far. Knock on wood, no bad storms. Give the farmers who are out there producing almost $300 million worth of income for this county, good weather this spring so that they can get their crops in the ground. And as always, please watch over those who watch over us while we sleep and through the day, those first responders and all our military personnel. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, today is the beginning of the end of a long process that started back in January called Budget Season. I have met with each and every one of you with all of our department heads. I think that we have produced a really nice budget. You've all had the opportunity to ask questions if you needed. So if there is no other questions, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn. I take it that we're not. Just kidding, just kidding. Mr. Hendricks, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
I almost took you up on that. All right, let's go.
The initial draft of the budget that you guys have reviewed, I'll just cover the highlight and the assumptions that are contained in the budget. Under the general fund, the revenues have been pretty steady. Once again, we're looking at probably about $100,000 of increase. Primary agency that we fund is the Sheriff's Department. For operations, that's continued at the same amount as last year. But in the budget, you'll see two items. One, the court voted on when the sheriff presented his budget back in January of about $51,000, which is a one-time deal and a benefit from a past period. And then another one that has just been added on the extra sheet that I gave you, and it's an amount that will go along with the CAD system, with the Joint 911 that the judge will talk about later. We did not do the water park as budgeted in the current budget, so that project pushes forward into the new budget and is contained in the park department for about $385,000. Another new fire truck for Whitesville, and $250,000 for a new airport station. The road fund, we're going to transfer about the same amount that we transferred last year in the budget, but I would remind you that the court had approved an extra million dollars. We amended the budget by an extra million, which we will expend before this current fiscal year is out. So we go back to the new budget, we'll transfer just approximately the normal amount, which also eliminates the half million dollars of extra money that were added in the prior two years because of bad winters. The jail, the finances have really done really well. In this current year, they had a change and they no longer were using that transport system that was using our jails as a distribution point. And he thought it may take a while to catch up with revenues, but there was really almost no lag. So revenues have held very well. The state prisoners are at a level where we're not seeing a huge negative impact to the general fund. So once again, we will be projecting to transfer a million to, to the jail. Economic Development Fund is being continued. We typically make it where we have a million dollars in that fund. You will see that this year is actually a little higher because we are projecting sale of some land, two parcels of land, I think, that we will then place those revenues in Economic Development Fund. If we don't sell the land, then we won't make the transfers. Saw the waste funds continue to do very well. It's the Enterprise Fund, as you know, we transfer no general fund dollars that finances its own operations. In the current year, we completed the construction of the new cell. All of that construction was done without issuing any additional debt. We were able to pay for it. We had set prices back in 2011 to allow us to do that without financing, and it worked. And we will end this current year with a cash balance that's actually exceeds what was projected. So revenues have held very well at the landfill. As far as the assumptions go, the assumptions are that currently adopted taxes will be held constant. There's no projected increase in any tax and no projected new tax. Property tax rates are currently thirteen and a half cents per hundred, and the occupational tax is .35%. The budget assumes no additional debt issued. We made the last payment on the prior sale at the landfill in February. So that debt was set to term in 2017, and it did, we made the last payment. So at this point, we have no debt in the landfill fund. We've already covered the sheriff and the jail. The cost of living for salaries, this budget contains a 2%, which was the COLA issued by the state. The retirement percentages, non-hazardous increased from 18.68 to 19.18, and hazardous went from 13.06 to 13.55. I think the judge is probably going to talk to you about agency funding and capital. The only other comment I would make is I handed each of you a sheet. Through the discussion, since this document was issued, there are a few really minor changes. But in case somebody mentions a different number than you're looking at, the four I handed you are the changes I know that have been made. 911 went from $650,000 to 672,231, which includes the CAD request. The airport operations funding will actually be 192,500, which is $100,000 plus last year's allocation. When they upgrade the CAD with the Joint 911, the Sheriff's Department's mobile data terminals will need to be updated. That is currently projected at $55,500. And then I looked at that CDBG grant. I knew it was originally for 250,000, and I knew that we wouldn't be able to spend all the money. And I just had plugged in the total for a placeholder, but I looked at it this week, and I'm dropping that number in your budget by 100,000. We will only carry forward about 150,000.
Is that it?
That's all I have, unless they have questions.
Commissioners, before we get or move forward, any questions or comments? I've got a couple. Under the budget assumptions, I think when we reduce the principal by two and a half million dollars this year, that will leave us somewhere around $20 million in debt to pay off. Seven years ago, we were somewhere around 40 million. So, you know, if you recall, at one time, somebody said, "Well, you can't talk about reducing debt because you're just making the normal payments." Well, the fact is, we're making the normal payments, reducing the amount of debt that we have, and added no new debt. So, cost of living adjustment for salaries, 2%. I'm proud that we've been able to take care of our people every year. One of the things that, and you're aware of it, unlike a lot of other agencies in the city in particular, the city has a step increase of about 1, 1 and 1/4% every year that goes along with their cost of living adjustment. Our step increase is 1% a year, and the employees receive that every third-year anniversary. So instead of getting it every year, so one employee who might be celebrating their third-year anniversary this year will get 2% plus 3%. So just to make you aware of that. Any question or comment before we... One other comment that I would like to make, and Commissioner Wathen, I'm sure you're aware of this, and the Treasurer alluded to it. You know, in the past, we would transfer money out of the Enterprise Fund to pay the debt on the expansion of the landfill. We have paid that debt off, and we have produced a landfill cell now that's twice as big as the initial one, and we did that out of cash flow. The landfill may have the opportunity, as you're aware, we bought several hundred acres next to the landfill earlier. We may have the opportunity to buy some more adjacent land to buffer that area around the landfill from our neighbors. And it would provide expansion for our land farming operation and tens of years more capacity for the landfill if needed. Last year, we decided to do the land farming ourselves instead of contracting it out. This year, under the capital expenses, you're going to see things for tractors and disc and manure spreaders and things like that that will be used for that. I think the reason we decided to do it instead of contracting it out, it was going to save us money. Kudos to the landfill, particularly the transfer station. We were talking about buying two new walking-floor trailers, and our supervisor determined that all we would have to do is turn those trailers, the floors, redo them, and we could get another three years out of them. Typically, we figure $60,000 is the cost. Five years is what you get out of it. So that's about $12,000 a year in capital costs. Redoing the floors will cost us about $15,000, meaning we'll have $5,000 in cost as opposed to 12. I know all of our department heads continually look at those kinds of savings. I think it's really important. I think that what we've done is we've gotten our department heads into the mode of thinking, how can we save taxpayer dollars, not we need the latest, shiniest, newest gadget. So with that, if you'll turn to your... I'm sorry, Commissioner, I thought you were going to...
I just had a question, and you may not know the answer to this, but under the retirement percentages, you know, if I remember right, that went down last year and now it's back up. Have they ever thought about maybe, instead of taking a decrease in the retirement fund, just keep running with it? Have you ever heard them talk about that?
Commissioner, I've brought that up at many of our meetings, that it was dumb to drop it, bring it back up, drop it, bring it back up. They should never drop it. They should only take the increase, particularly when you're millions, I'm sorry, not millions, when you're billions of dollars in the red. Yeah. They do it. They do it thinking that when they can show a slight decrease, they will appease the ire of the elected officials. Doesn't do anything to help mine. It's like trying to fight heartburn with a Rolaide. Any other questions? If you will turn to A3, which is the agency funding, every year, we get a lot of requests. I would tell you that we are not funding any new requests this year. We had several. One of the biggest changes is in the airport operations. Last year, we provided $92,500. They requested 198,000 roughly this year. I propose that we give them 192,500. The $100,000 difference is the request of 100,000 from the city and 100,000 from the county. Right now, they are facing a $200,000 deficit because of lost farm income and some other expenses. So all the other agencies that I go down through there, you will see the requested amount and the proposed amount. I would note, under DC CAPS, which is the Davis County Access Program, Health Access Program, we have funded that every year that I have been judge-executive. And the prior administration started that funding out of some hospital wellness money. This year, at the Davis County Health Department meeting yesterday, a report was made that we received $29.70 in return for every dollar that is put into that program, meaning that we received $29.70 in prescription drugs and our health services donated. So it's a pretty, really a good program. I don't know any of us that wouldn't invest money in something that gave us a $29 to $1 return. As you go down through there, I'm just going to skip through real quick. I don't think that you're going to, may or may not have any questions. You might notice that in 2016-17, we funded OCTC's Foundation Common Reedy Program, $15,000. This year, they didn't request anything, and we didn't fund them. That's because that fulfilled their request for, I think it was $50,000 total, and we gave it to them in the manner that they wanted it allocated. You know, I will go back. CASA, last year, we gave them $2,500. This year, they had a special project. They requested 4,460. The extra $2,000, $2,100 is to help them put in some handicap restrooms at their facility. Wendell Foster Center, under the Levy Trust, if you'll look, Wendell Foster, last year, we budgeted $7,597. This year, they requested $86.99. Next year, they may request $4,250. They request what they need. It's never more than what they need. And so I felt that it wasn't too much to give them an extra $1,000 this year because they probably will reduce it by that much next year. They really do an excellent job, as do all of our agencies. They do an excellent job. Coming on down, you'll notice that the arts agencies, several of them, requested more money than we gave them last year, but you will notice that we are giving them the exact same amount of money. The multi-agency project program is $50,000. That's what we've put in there in the last few years. That's money that comes from House Bill 202 funds, and we make that available to the agencies, the arts agencies, to try to encourage them to come up with programs that multiple agencies can benefit from. The scanner that we awarded money for two meetings ago was one of those things, where the Museum of Science and History, the Symphony, the Art Museum, the Bluegrass Museum, even the clerk can use that scanner. So it's not like buying five scanners, each one for... It's buying something that they can use. If you recall, the first item that we ever did that way was OwensboroTickets.com. We gave them $50,000, and they used that to purchase the software so that they could go online and sell tickets for all the arts agencies, as well as a lot of the not-for-profit agencies. Last year, we budgeted $891,984 for the agency funding. This year, we budgeted $989,211 for agency funding. If you take out the $100,000 extra that we gave to the airport, you'll find that's essentially no change in our agency funding. That ends agency funding. I'll answer any questions that you might have. Okay. A4 is capital. As you look under governmental funds, that's money that would come out of our general fund. We have capital funds in for our new fire truck. As the Treasurer said, that goes to the Whitesville Volunteer Fire Department. Now, that's 200,000 is the part that we pay in, whatever that fire truck costs, anything over and above the $200,000, that particular volunteer fire department will pay. The new airport fire station, we have allocated $250,000 as our part. That's expected to cost $5 million roughly, and our local match was 5%. And the state, I believe, is coming up with 5%. So there's 10% from the state and local, and 90% from the FAA. Water park at Horsefort Creek is 385,000. We have actually looked at purchasing the equipment ourselves. We have already got commitments from some of our local labor organizations that were fad labor. Our operations, Engineering Department and Operations will do some concrete work, some grading, and that type of thing. And we believe that we can bring that water park in for about $200,000. Now, that leaves $185,000 to cover the cost of reworking the entrances and the exits. The county engineer was, I think, were you out there, you had a call regarding the traffic? This call, this first weekend, that we had soccer out there, and they had vehicles stacked on Fairview Drive all the way back to Highway 54. So we really need, and you know, part of the problem is, is you come in, you go to the top of the hill, and you're trying to park in the parking lot, and you have kids running across. And George, you taking your cane and trying to get across, and Charlie, you in a wheelchair, we're pushing you across. Things get slowed down. We've got to figure out a way to stack the traffic off of Fairview and make it safer. And that's one of the things we're looking at, but we think we can do that entire project, including all of the extra roadwork and drainage for 385. Destryam Bridge at Illa Creek Park is 100,000. If you recall, we had... If you recall, we had one that became structurally unsound last year. We shut it down. We replaced it and Commissioner Wath, I think we talked about replacing the other one this year and that money is in there to do that. Ball field light replacement. This is at Panther Creek Park, field number one. That's actually what we think the cost, and, and treasurer and Commissioner, help me. I think what that includes is the poles and the lights for one field and next year we'll put the lights on those same poles, trying to light another field, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Yes.
So the, the poles, poles in the middle between the two fields are, uh, a little stronger than the regular poles.
But they're gonna do double duty lighting two fields instead of one. Surface replacement for Panther Creek, Baldamon, I guess it's getting a little, a little rustic. So you gotta dodge the potholes in it. Mass fatality vehicle, the coroner came and originally I think he asked for fifty thousand dollars for a vehicle. In effect, it's a refrigerated vehicle so that if there were mass fatalities in Davis County, uh, there, there's not enough holding facilities for the deceased in the funeral homes and the hospital. This would allow us to have a refrigerated facility that could hold those extra deceased people. Subsequently, he found, I think he found a grant and was able to find some money where his request was dropped from roughly fifty thousand to fifteen thousand. So, um, road department, great all, the telescoping excavator, uh, and four sets of stands for the salt spreaders, uh, for winter. Um, we were, um, looking at a great all and one dump truck because the dump truck had a cracked frame. Upon inspecting it one day with the engineer, we found we had a second dump truck with a cracked frame and the guys out at the shop, at the insistence of, of the county engineer, was able to find someone, yeah, looked sideways at me, was able to find someone who could actually cut those frames out and weld in replacement frames and certify the trucks for road usage. So, and we don't have to replace two dump trucks, which Mark, I think they were what? A hundred fifty thousand dollars a truck? Yeah, roughly a hundred fifty thousand dollars a truck. So again, making good judgments and, and making equipment last a little longer than normally. Uh, the TE grant, uh, from the engineering, that's walking path, walking path grant. That's our part of the money for that Yellow Creek Park to hospital or... Yeah, okay. Uh, so we have total of one million, five-hundred sixty thousand dollars coming out of our general fund, uh, going to cover capital expenses. Look down at the enterprise fund, the landfill. Uh, you know, we've got tractor for land farming, baler, sludge spreader, bush hog, uh, fifteen-foot drill, disc mower, rakes, all the things, all the things that you would normally need to do the land farming. And for those who are watching this, land farming means we're gonna take the sludge and spread it on old strip mined land. And we're gonna reach, rich the earth and it's gonna do double duty. We keep it out of our landfill, keep that wet sludge out of our landfill and we think that's what caused some water problems, uh, in the years past and kept us from getting the amount of gas out there that we should. Two roll-off containers for the East Convenience Center. Uh, those roll-off containers for East Convenience Center is the one just east of Knottsville. Uh, eighty-thousand, eighty-five thousand dollars for new scales at Lansville. It's getting in poor shape and harder to maintain. Great Control for, uh, D six dozer. I don't know if you remember last year when we were building that cell, the newest cell, we really had some problem with the, with the, uh, device, laser device that mounted on a dozer and on a, a stick or, or somewhere out in the field. We ended up using a GPS system that bounces a signal off of satellite back down and you can get within a half inch. Well, this will be mounted on our own, we won't have to rent it. So, uh, if you look, uh, the transfer station, we're gonna replace half the tipping floor, a hundred twenty thousand dollars. It's got some cracks, it's getting in bad shape and then we're gonna rebuild the convenience center where folks drop, uh, uh, their trash off. So the enterprise fund is six-hundred eighty-six thousand, six-hundred thirty-seven dollars. All of that will come out of the revenues generated by the landfill. No taxpayer dollars, uh, will go into that. Now, that's not quite true because as Robbie Hawker always said, it's no taxpayer dollars. Jim and I always said, once that money comes into our coffers, it's taxpayer dollars. But you get the gist of it. Any, uh, any question on those items before I move on? Over on A five, uh, if you look, we've got a total of five hundred thousand dollars in asphalt resurfacing. State reimbursables, we got flex funds, the TE grant for the shared use path of miscellaneous, six-hundred forty-five thousand. Uh, again, it just shows the capital equipment, uh, that I talked about on the other side and the engineer projects. I don't know why we let the engineer do any projects, but he's got money there. Road structure study. Did you slip that one in on us? What, what is that?
That is the money we use to, uh, uh, study bridges that need to be replaced. That is the hydraulic studies and the plans to replace them.
Okay. Any question there? Go to A six, just kind of a recap, uh, seventeen eighteen budget as compared to the, the, um, sixteen seventeen budget and it shows increases and decreases. As you'll notice, our total general fund budget for seventeen eighteen is projected to be twenty-five million, one-hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. It was twenty-four, twenty-four million, nine-hundred and forty-eight thousand in sixteen seventeen for an increase of about two-hundred forty-nine thousand dollars. That's about a one percent increase. Yes, sir.
The only thing I would point out is that at first glance, it looks like the solid waste fund is the expense, those are not just expenses.
Yes.
See, there's a two million dollar difference in the balance.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean spending went up two million. What that means is I under-budgeted the reserve in that account last year and so I'm, I'm catching up with what the reserve is, plus we've added to the reserve this year. So it's, it's not an increase in expense, it's, it's more reflected as an increase in the reserve balance, so.
If you look at the road fund, you'll see a drop of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, uh, this year over last year. If you look at the jail fund, the jail fund's up about four percent or three-hundred fifty-three thousand dollars, but, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that's money coming out of our general fund to subsidize it. It could mean that, that the, there's a difference in their revenues as well.
Their revenues are going up. That's correct.
Uh, LGA, uh, there's a drop of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars just meaning there's less government economic assistance money coming to us. And as you know, we have had issues for the last seven years, uh, with the state giving us more to do and less funds to do it with. Economic Development Fund, as the treasurer indicated, we've got a five hundred thousand dollars additional funds there anticipating our portion of the sale of some property from Mid-America Air Park, as well as our portion of the sale from the property at, uh, Ninth Street and Allen. I'm, I'm thinking we pay, what do we have in that property, Jim? Eight hundred thousand dollars between the city and the county? And we got roughly a hundred twenty thousand dollars.
Four, I don't know what, yeah, I guess they had at least...
Yeah, they had four, we had four, we sold it for a hundred and twenty. About three-hundred sixty thousand dollar loss for each. That's pretty good, isn't it? Hope we don't do too many more of those deals. The, uh, bond fund, uh, is roughly down three-hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars. Talk about the bond fund, Jim. Tell me what that means.
Well, if you look at the particulars in, in Fund twenty-one, be the easiest, on page twenty-six of Packet B. You can, you can see a side-by-side down in the debt service, uh, the difference in the payments.
Right.
And then part of that's also gonna be due to the, the, uh, House Bill two oh two money, the, whatever residual we have, we have in that, so. But there's nothing, I mean, there, there's nothing huge that is driving it. We have the debt schedules that, um, we've refinanced everything that we can refinance so we have the lowest interest rates we could get. Several of them under two, two percent now. And then the payouts, uh, were shortened on a couple of them. For instance, the, uh...
In the end, I think what it reflects is that we have less money that goes into the bond fund to debt service the outstanding debt because we're paying the debt down and all.
Yeah, WKU expires in...
Yeah.
Two thousand twenty?
Twenty is what I think, yeah. So we're in good shape and anytime you see that number as a negative, I think it's good. Solid Waste Operating Fund, as, as the treasurer said, you might say, well, look, that thing is up, uh, two-point-one million dollars, but that's, that's not all expenses. It reflects a lot of revenue. I think we underestimated the revenue with the Henderson County contract, or Henderson City contract. Health Insurance Fund unfortunately is up roughly five hundred thousand dollars. That's a reflection in the payouts that we have had, the, our, our population. We've had several major claims. Someone might say, well, I thought you did a, uh, you had done some kind of a great deal uh, by rebidding the health insurance and you were saving money. Let me tell you that if we hadn't done what we did, this would probably be up what? Another half million dollars?
Yeah, more than that. And then this one, the, that's really not reflecting what we're intending to spend.
Yes.
I want this high enough that we don't have to amend it. It costs, it costs money when we do an amendment. So I, I set that account high enough that hopefully we will come in under and then we won't have to do a budget amendment. But like the three-seven, we, we did have to amend this year because January and February had some high claims. But the last three months, they've came, come backwards. So I think right now we're looking at for fiscal year eighteen is normal medical inflation, actually.
Jim, is, is the reason that, that when you say it costs us money to amend the budget is the reason, and I'm asking this for, for the people that might be watching, is because we have to publish the budget. Is that each time we change it?
You have to do, you have to advertise the second reading and then you have to advertise after it was approved. So you got, you have two advertisements, cost you a minimum seven hundred bucks probably.
Right. Under the, uh, Solid Waste Construction Fund, uh, there's a huge decrease simply because we have now completed the construction of the new cell. Uh, Solid Waste, uh, Closure Reserve Fund, Post-Closure Reserve Fund, those two funds are statutory. I mean, the state says and determines what we've got to put in there. The Solid Waste Debt Service Fund, uh, you will see, I mean, it's down three-hundred seventy-six thousand dollars because we made our last payment on the old cell.
Yeah, the thousands merely a placeholder so that we don't delete the fund in case we needed it, so. Yeah, that's it.
So the total of all funds this year is sixty-five million, seven-hundred and twenty-seven thousand versus sixty-four million, one-hundred and forty-six thousand are an increase of one-point-five million dollars. That's about a two percent overall on our general fund and all other funds combined. Not, uh, and that, that is about a reflection of what the state called, said the cost of living was.
Yeah, the, the million six-oh again is not spending the budget. We are not spending that much more money.
Well, and...
The primarily, the primary driver of that number is the, is the positive, uh, receipts in the solid waste fund.
And remember the Economic Development Fund is, it's there, it's available. If we don't spend it, it carries over to the next year. So it's, there's nothing that says we will spend that money as well. Any question or comment? Just quickly, gentlemen, A seven, uh, goes down through and gives you a breakout of the general fund appropriations this year, of twenty-five million, one-hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. We have revenue to offset it. Uh, the road fund is four million, four-hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. We have revenue to offset it. The jail fund is eight million, three-hundred and ninety-two thousand. We have revenue to offset it. Local Government Economic Assistance Fund is five-hundred ninety, ninety-two thousand dollars, revenue to offset it. Economic Development Fund, one million, five-hundred and four thousand. That's not necessarily expense, but we have the revenue to offset it. Bond Fund Debt Service, three-point-nine-six-five, uh, million, revenue to offset it. Uh, Solid Waste is seventeen million, four-hundred and nineteen thousand and it will be offset by revenues generated by that fund, that enterprise fund. Our Health Insurance Fund of, of four-point-two million dollars, uh, will be offset by transfer out of our general fund revenue. So again, all funds, the total budget appropriation is sixty-five million, seven-hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. All of that has revenue in one form or another to offset it. Any question or comment? I'm going to comment by exception as, as quickly we'll go through. If you have a question as I go through this, uh, you can ask, but under Exhibit B is a description of our revenues and what we think we are going to receive, uh, including our transfers in and transfers out. You folks have had an opportunity to review that and see it. Jim, would you, would you care to comment on any, anything that out, is outstanding there?
No, it's, it's actually, uh, pretty routine. The, the, the top line may look odd, it's a pretty good increase. But as you recall, there was a paper, article in a newspaper last year about how much the assessment was and that, that would equate... When we did the budget, I didn't have the information to validate it, so I didn't budget the increase. We had projected six-point-five of real property taxes. It turned in, uh, we're stepping it up to six-point-eight and we actually are gonna collect about six-point-eight in the current year. Six-sevens to six-eight. So that was due to that huge increase in the assessment. Uh, other than that, there's really no big, um, increases or decreases. It's, it's, um, business as usual, actually.
I might, I might call you, your attention to the nine-one-one user fee and nine-one-one cellphone user fee generates about three-hundred and eighty thousand. That's, that's to compare, uh, to the six-hundred and seventy, roughly six-hundred and seventy thousand that we will fund our portion of nine-one-one this year. So you, you can see there's about a, a, a three-hundred thousand dollar, uh, to three-hundred and ten thousand dollars coming out of the general fund that will supplement those funds. That's why you see cities and counties every year lobbying very hard for the state legislature to help, uh, increase those fees or to collect more fees on cellphones, prepaid phones, to help, uh, municipalities and county governments to offset that cost. Because it's a real cost and it's, it's a, it's, it's a very important cost. That's why as we looked at nine-one-one this year, uh, while they made several requests to us, uh, we, we examined the requests for the additional funds for the CAD system. CAD system's fifteen years old. I think Paul said it was around in two thousand and two. They were unable to get anyone to work on it, make fixes and patches. It was starting to lock up and, and that's where they will take and load calls in. And, and it's important for the first responders as well because when you bring up that area, let's say that somebody maintains some guns or he, he is a, uh, persistent felon, then you can warn the, the first responders that you may have trouble out there. We also looked at the P twenty-five. The P twenty-five, uh, you know, we have spent a lot of money over the years upgrading and updating and, um, we felt that, that was not necessary to replace it this year, that we ought to set up some sort of a capital account and start building in the future. They also requested additional four personnel or four people. And, and looking at the amount of money that we already supplement, looking at what the city supplements and also looking at the city's budget constraints this year, we felt that they are authorized twenty-five people. We fund twenty-five people, but on average, they only spend the appropriations for twenty-one people. In other words, they have the money to hire... In other words, they have the money to hire twenty-five people, but they're only hiring on average twenty-one, meaning that they have monies left over for personnel that was being rolled over into a capital account. So, my recommendation was that they perhaps look at hurrying up the hiring process. It right now takes about six months to replace a telecommunicator. Or give the exec- the director of nine-one-one, Paul Nave, the ability to overhire. In other words, if he's authorized twenty-five, but he only has twenty-one, authorize him to hire up to twenty-seven. We don't have to put any extra money in there because the money's already there. They're not spending it for personnel. So, you know, we've heard for years, Commissioner Castlin is our liaison, about the stress they go through and they need more people. And that's true, but we have made the funds available for them to get more people. They just haven't been able to keep up with the hiring. So, sometimes I think the treasurer and I, we kind of thought we were screaming into an empty room that people weren't understanding what we were doing, but I wanted you to note that we are putting money out of our general fund in, and if we're doing that, the city, I think, is one point, one point two, Jim, aren't they?
I don't remember.
I'm thinking that they're supplementing their, their portion by about one point two million, so it's, it's fairly expensive. But it's necessary for two things, for the citizen's safety and for our first responder's safety. There was one other I wanted to go down through here, and I can't remember. Not a big difference there. If you, if you look over on page two, about the fourth one down, it says land sales, and you'll see where we put three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in our budget this year. That's what the treasurer was talking about. We, we moved those monies into our Economic Development Fund because we think that's our portion of the land that's going to be sold out in America Air Park. Everything else is pretty self-explanatory. Any questions? General Government is actually a little less this year than it was last, but Jim doesn't have, have to do with reallocating some salaries, portions of salaries. On page two, total county judge executives.
Judge, yeah. You threw me when you said general government, yeah.
It's, it's just.
That's all, that's right. It's just, we were allocating, we allocate several employees' salaries to different places, and we changed some allocations.
Right. And that, that's, that's what that is. If you look under County Attorney, you'll see a very minor, minor adjustment. As I go down through here, you, you just stopped me. If you want to talk about the County Clerk, Office Supply, Sheriff's Program Support, you know, very minor increase. Under the Coroner, again, the.
Excuse me. While they're on the sheriff, I remind you that on your next draft,
Yes.
you will see an additional line under sheriff of that number four on the modification page.
Fifty-five thousand dollars.
Or number, number three, not number four.
Or the MDT, Modified the MDT or Mobile Data Terminals. That's driven by the new CAD system. So, on the face of it, while we were told that we would only be out a quarter of the roughly six hundred thousand, it turns out that we were out a quarter of that plus the fifty-five thousand, which sometimes what you're told isn't all you got. Remember how engineers do us, Charlie? They never give you the all-in cost, do they? Other government offices was that slight increase that we were talking about. Coroner, slight increase. That's from the refrigerated vehicle. Fiscal Court, which includes the commissioners, very slight increase, about sixteen thousand dollars. PVA, that's the contribution that we get. Is that what we buy from the, we buy the PVA's valuation for tax purposes?
Yeah, that, that amount is set by the state.
Right. Assessments Board, two thousand dollars we pay when they meet and look at the, here, here appeals to their assessment. County Treasurer's Office up about ten thousand. Human Resources, virtually the same. Information System is up slightly. Most of it's by personnel. Law Library and same. Election Board expense is going to be the same. One of the things I would remind you, commissioners, the, the General Assembly passed legislation where now wet-dry votes will take place during primary elections or general elections. Thank you for doing that. Unless, unless the petitioner wants to bond and pay for the total cost of the election. Our contribution to planning zoning is slight increase. Economic Development is a slight increase. If you look at the courthouse operations, there's a huge decrease, and that decrease is reflected under repairs. We're going to put a roof on this, in this fiscal year as opposed to next fiscal year. So, you'll see there's almost a fifty percent reduction in cost. The Judicial Center, there is a slight reduction in cost. County Operations Center, slight increase, and the Judicial Annex is the same. So, our total general government funding of seven point seven four four million is slightly about four hundred thousand dollars less than last year, and that's mainly made up by the roof that isn't in there for the courthouse. Look under Protection to Persons and Property. We see a slight increase in the, under the fire departments. Well, it's not quite a slight increase. It's five hundred thousand dollar increase. And I'm sitting here, was, was that?
Well, the fire, the, the fire department, I mean, the station is the biggest part.
Yeah, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we have for the station is the big, the very last one, is, is the big increase. The rest of it's reflected in salaries and hazard pay and.
And insurance.
And, and employee insurance of fifty thousand dollars. MA Director, three ninety versus three sixty-three. Community Warning System, we got twenty thousand dollars in there for another, I think, a fire or a warning siren.
And Judge, if I can interject, I almost mentioned this back when you were on the other page, but on the, the two hundred and fifty thousand on the fire, I, I just wanted the citizens to know that, that is, while it's a city-county airport, it's, the, the local match is being made a hundred percent by Davis County Fiscal Court. The, the city is participating at the fifty percent level with the operations portion of the airport's budget that we contribute.
Airport, not the fire station.
Airport, right. But, but on this fire station that is at the airport, that, that is being done a hundred percent, that local match, that five percent you mentioned is done, is done a hundred percent by Davis County Fiscal Court.
I was at a meeting, and the argument was county's getting a new county fire station, and my response was county doesn't need a new fire station. That fire station is being driven a hundred percent by the requirement of FAA and the need to house the ARF truck.
Yes.
A, a Airport Response Fire Truck that sprays foam and all that. And I would note too, that while it is a joint city-county operation, that the county funds a hundred percent the manning of that fire station. So, there is, you know, my, my, the way I thought it probably should have gone was that we would, we would continue to fund the manning of it. But the city would put up half of the cost of the local, our five percent. But they are having budget issues, and we, the argument was made that we need to go ahead and move forward. As you recall, there was some conversation about adding an additional bay, Right. which meant the county would fund a hundred percent of that bay, and we said, no, that we would, we would fund the five percent match, but not fund an additional bay.
Right.
So, yes.
I, I just wanted to interject that and let the citizens know that, that reality.
Okay, thank you. Office of nine-one-one, again, as, as you notice, this year, we, we, actually, that is going to be adjusted. There, there will be some change there. Isn't that correct, County Treasurer? The CAD system is, I mean, we're showing, or is that the total cost?
This, this, this CAD line, that's, that's a different.
That's a different.
That's not the one you're, that's just a, a, some expense that we had for the backup system, so that's not your change.
That's the backup system here.
Yeah, it was for, for joint nine-one-one expenses, all on that one line.
Okay.
Going from five seventy-five to six fifty.
Right.
Which will really be six hundred and seventy-two to thirty-one.
That's what I was getting at, six hundred and seventy-two thousand instead of the six fifty. And then we're going to have to add the other fifty-five thousand somewhere. Somebody's going to pay for it, and I can tell you, the sheriff doesn't have funds to pay for it.
Well, you're paying for it, that's what we, under the sheriff's.
Yes.
There'll be an extra line there, but Fiscal Court will pay the.
Yes. Other governmental offices are about the same, so you can see an increase of about six million dollars in protection to persons of property. The majority of it was capital cost and, and the nine-one-one system, which is really being driven by capital cost because we're not really giving them any extra personnel. General Health and Sanitation is Animal Control, a slight increase there. Soil Conservation District, those folks did ask Fiscal Court for some extra money to, I think it was about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars because they wanted us to participate in a government program that would pay folks in agriculture to provide ten-foot filter strips along streams and things like that, and we chose not to do that. So, General Health and Sanitation, six fifty, or seven fifty-seven versus seven oh seven. Social Services, Elizabeth Monday Center and RSVP Senior Programs, slight increase. Services to Children and Youth, a slight increase, two thirty-three versus two thirty. A lot of that, where you see Levy Trust, that is, those are monies that are distributed by Davis County Fiscal Court that is received from the jail as a result of the use of the Levy property to, to build the jail on. Yes, sir.
I just want to mention, I don't know where, where we should mention this, but the Elizabeth Monday Center changed their name to the Monday Activity Center. I don't know if we want to change that in our budget.
Yeah, I think so.
The Monday Activity Center.
Services, again, to children and youth, you see that. General Charity and Welfare, slight increase. The, the main cost there being DC caps of twenty-five thousand, and I'll tell you, the community dental clinic, that's the other cost. As you notice, we gave them ten thousand dollars last year. I upped that to fifteen thousand dollars this year. I think some of you there, when they reopen that dental clinic, they do a heck of a good job. And, and dental care is, is one of those things that they really have a hard time finding for disadvantaged folks, so they do an excellent job.
They're going to stay in it. Where are they going to move?
They're going to move. Now, now we can go back. Do not discuss anything that you didn't want Austin to hear, since we, we got a lot of it out of the way, Austin. No, there, it's my understanding they're going to move, and, but we don't know where they're going to move yet.
They have to move.
They have to move because they're going to tear the Mayfair Square down. Victims Assistance, virtually the same, or it is the same. Total Social Services, four twenty-three, eight eighty-five versus four fourteen, five forty-nine. Recreation and Culture, the majority of it is our Parks Department. One million, eight hundred and thirty thousand this year versus one million, five hundred and seven thousand last year. Vast majority of it, well, I can't say that, can I? Because we had three, three eighty-five in it last year and three eighty-five.
It's the other capital projects.
But it's other capital projects for the park. Tourist Commission is six hundred and ninety thousand that we will transfer over to them as part of the hotel motel tax. Tourist Commission gets three percent of that hotel motel tax. Two percent of, of any hotel motel stay goes into our, our House Bill two oh two fund. And then one percent is transferred over to the city to offset the cost of operation of the convention center. As commissioners, as you're aware, when the convention center was set, we were asked to pass that last one cent. And since the citizens of Owensboro are also Davis County citizens, we felt that it was an opportunity to help offset some of the tax burden that would fall on their shoulders, and why not have the folks who are staying in our hotels and motels help offset or pay some of that expense? The cultural programs, as you look at it, thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars versus thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Total Recreation and Culture, two point five five seven versus two point one four four. Airport Services, you will see that will be adjusted, that will be adjusted, another twenty-five thousand up to make it a total of one ninety-two five this year versus one forty-eight five last year. Transportation, this is busing of the non-public school students. We've got three hundred thousand dollars allocated. It typically has come in less than that.
We're just making, we have to make the expense match to revenue.
Right.
Typically, the expense has been closer to two hundred with the low fuel prices.
Right. You would, if you look, Capital Projects, the Property Development Waterline Extension, we got five thousand in there. I don't think we've got any water lines that placeholder, I guess, keep it open.
Right.
The GIS GPS project, I think that's our contribution to that project with the city. And it's used by, there are, what, City, County, RWRA, OMU, and.
One more.
Who?
OMPC.
OMPC. So, there, there's about four or five agencies that go in and share that expense. Ambulance grant of ten thousand, five hundred dollars, that's a grant that we file and.
The flow through, it comes through OCTC and then flow it through the yellow ambulance.
Right, okay. You know, you know, Mr. Treasurer, I noticed in the city's projected budget, they have monies in there for ambulance, an ambulance subsidy. I'm trying to understand that because right now, the city and the county bid out the ambulance service in our community, and to my knowledge, we pay no subsidy for that ambulance service. Is that correct?
We don't pay anything.
And I would assume the city doesn't pay anything either. I do know that the bid for the ambulance service franchise, I think, is coming due next year. But, but right now, our community, and I don't know about you, Commissioner, or you, Commissioner, but every time I go to a, a County Judge Executives Association Meeting or CAKO, people will talk about, well, what do you subsidize ambulance service for or by in your community? And I say, nothing, and they are amazed. They're amazed. So, our, our citizens have gotten a good deal with the yellow ambulance, or is it Arrow? Is it Yellow now? What's the name of the ambulance service? Yellow, Arrow?
I think it's Yellow.
I, ambulance service. We call it the ambulance service. Again, looking under Administration, there's a slight decrease. Reserve for Budget Transfer, there's a slight increase. And, and what that means is it's about what kind of cash we have that we can transfer if we need to, to go into it. All of that, other than other governmental agencies, if you look at, at the CBG Grants, there's the Masonville Sewer Project that, that the treasurer has about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars left in, but I think you said.
I'm changing that to one fifty because we made a payment two weeks ago.
Okay. If you look at the Regional Recovery, CDBG grant at two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, as you recall, we just, we just passed a resolution to go after that grant again. Total Expenses, twenty-five point one nine seven million versus twenty-four point four one seven million last year.
So, Jim, just to be clear, on, on that hundred and fifty for the Masonville, that's actually just a carryover of a grant that's unspent.
You can see the, and look under the sixteen-seventeen budget, six hundred and two was the original grant.
Right.
And we, what I had to do back when I put this together was estimate what we would not have spent.
Okay.
And we had about two fifty, but we made a payment two weeks ago, so I'm going to update the first reading to reflect that we only have one fifty left.
Okay. Thank you. Road and Bridge Fund, again, as you look down through there, I think everyone, everything is in line. If, and most of them show a little bit of reduction, and that's simply because we are putting less money into our roads and bridges this year than we have in the past two years. And it's also a reflection of our, a lower amount of money that we're getting from the state. from the state. I don't know what that thing is doing, it's out of, out of range. Again, look at Jail Operations, and it compares Jail Operations Revenue, they're up about three hundred and ninety, or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, projected to be up three hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year over last. I would tell you that Jailer Osborne is looking into getting more federal prisoners. The federal prisoners reimbursed at a higher rate than state prisoners, and, and I think a question was asked, well, if he gets more federal prisoners, will we send more state prisoners back to the state and let them do what they want unless they want to pay us the federal rate? And as everyone out there knows, local prisoners, city-county prisoners who are awaiting trial, we pay that expense until they are sentenced. Once they're sentenced, they become the responsibility of the state or the Fed. But while they're awaiting sentencing, their cost to house them, their medical costs, all those costs accrue to Davis County Fiscal Court. Let's see, Bay Road, that's just Budget Transfer, Local Government Assistance, Economic Development. Solid Waste, again, you know, Commissioners, I don't see anything, any, this is just a rehash of what we talked about earlier. An interesting page on page twenty-six, again, is the, is the Debt Service and Bond Repayment Schedule, and if, if you look at the first one there at the center of the page, Complex, what's the complex payment? Is that the OpCenter? OpCenter?
Yes.
And, and you'll see, as we reduce, we've got the, the complex we're paying on, the Detention Center. Tourism is, is the bonded indebtedness that we, we borrow money to do repairs to the Rear Park Center and to help the Art Museum.
Right.
That was being debt serviced by the two percent hotel motel tax. That hotel motel tax is generating more money than we need, therefore, we were able to get a bill passed to allow us to use it without bonding it. You can see the Convention Center debt and what the cost is. Western Kentucky University, the, that's debt service on that bond. Economic Development Projects, then you, those are principles, and then you look at the interest payments. Somewhere, I was hoping, but I guess I didn't, somewhere we had the dates of those being paid off, and I don't think it's in my, perhaps not here, it'll be in our big book.
Yeah, it's not in this packet.
Not in this packet, but it'd be in the big book. I think what's interesting is to notice that we're paying off debt rather rapidly.
Judge?
Sir? Excuse me. Back on the bond principal of the Convention Center, you know, in sixteen seventeen, it was a million and two fifty, and it's gone up to a million and three fifteen, is that, the rate has gone up?
Well, the, the, it was not an even, it's equal in total payment, not equal in which, whether it's principal or interest.
Principal payment.
You have to look at the entire amortization schedule, the principal fluctuates.
Okay, thank you.
It was refinanced, what, two years ago for a ten-year period?
Yes.
We actually made, I think it was a five hundred thousand dollar additional principal payment, refinanced it for ten years. We did not increase the length, that's how much, how long it had to go, but we received a, a pretty good reduction. We think we'll pay it off early by six or seven years.
You can see at the bottom, Commissioner, the interest dropped.
Yeah.
To what it is, it's, it's such a short term and such a big payment, you're going to be paying more principal. Well, it, like I said, it's not like a mortgage where you're paying the same thing every month. It, it was, the way they did it, you, if, if you look at the schedule, you'll see.
And remember this, we have an insurance tax portion, which is four percent of the eight percent, dedicated to pay, or to debt service that bond. That four percent is sun, sunsets. When the bond is paid off, then that four percent goes away.
Goes away.
Except, if you get enough in the fund, once you get enough into the fund to pay the debt, to debt service it to the end, that tax will go away. In other words, if we've got eight years left, and in year six, we have enough in the fund to make the next payments, we will remove that four percent insurance tax by ordinance, by law. I think when the city did theirs, it was for thirty years, and the best, I remember, they don't have a sunset clause.
They did not put a sunset clause.
That's right, Commissioner, you were there, weren't you?
I was there.
Did you vote on the city side or the county side?
I voted on the city side.
And I think you voted no.
I did not vote to raise the tax.
Commissioners, really, I don't see anything else in here that, that really needs any explanation, except to say that I want to appreciate, I want to thank, first of all, the County Treasurer for his hard work, all of our staff, and each Commissioner in particular, because you act as liaison with your, your, the folks that you work with. It makes it a whole lot easier when you have those folks run by you the things that they want to do, and you vet them for me, and then you, if you bring them to me with your recommendation, nine times out of ten, they're going to get done, unless for, there's something that you may not have been aware of. But I can tell you, if they bring it without you vetting it and without you knowing it, there's almost zero chance of getting it done. So, we, we, Commissioner Castlin, I, I see your engineer over there just smiling, I, I think he doesn't believe that. Once again, I think we've produced a budget that is, is, number one, it's balanced, number two, it keeps a, a, a good reserve, number three, and, and the biggest thing that we can say is to the citizens of Davis County that we have not raised taxes once again. Now, that doesn't mean, doesn't mean that you might not see an increase in your property tax, because every year, the Property Valuation Administrator looks at a quarter of the property in Davis County and reassesses it. So, it very well could mean that even though we didn't raise the rate, last year, as a matter of fact, we reduced our rates slightly in order to stay under that max increase. But what it means is, is that through just normal increases in revenue because of property appreciation, we, we stay within our budget and we stay within that revenue stream. So, thank you all for an excellent year this past year, and look forward to another good year coming. Any question or comment?
I just want to throw this in, I, I want to thank you for your hard work and the staff as well. The, the one part that impresses me and has, ever since I've been over here on Fiscal Court, is, is all the efforts that are made to, to see if we can do something that makes more sense. And, and I know we did that with our insurance when, when I first became a Commissioner, but also, you mentioned this, you had the example of the walking trailers, and, and how by spending some money to, to do those repairs, we're able to, to save money and extend the life of those, and, and, and annual cost that's considerably less than what the, the cost of a new would, would be. And I know we've had those examples in the past as well, and, and I think through your leadership, we've, we've, we've seen, as you said, the staff start thinking that way, and, and not necessarily that, that we shove it back to them and say, hey, rethink this, but I think they're doing it on their own now, and I commend them for that.
One of the things that we've, we've done is we do zero-based budgeting, means, meaning that you can't come in and expect to get what you got last year just because you got it. Anybody that's sat in on a budget hearing with, with me and, and a department head will know that they better be able to justify every dollar, because I, I know where that dollar comes from, it comes out of the pocket of the taxpayer. And, and while it may just mean a few dollars here and a few dollars there, it's their few dollars, and I feel that I don't have a right to spend their dollars, that they have the right to spend their dollars. So, my, my job is to make sure the trains run on time for the least amount of money out of taxpayers' pocket, and I think that this commission does it. And I would tell you, part of that reason is that each and every one of us have been in private business, private enterprise, so we know what it's like. Yes, sir?
I just want to make a comment, I, you know, I think this budget process really starts a year ago, it, it, all year long, and the employees doing what they can do to save money, and, and we run this, we run as many parts of the government as we can, we run it like a business. And I think because of our employees and them buying into that idea, we're able to do the things we're able to do. And one of the things we're able to do is to give the employees a nice raise, and so, and it's because they've bought into the process and they, and they do their share, they do their part, so. Starts a year ago.
It does. Commissioner?
Judge, I just want to come out with Charlie, the, for yourself and Jim Hendricks, Jim's a, he's a tough negotiator, and, and when he gets done negotiating, then he comes to you, which that's his job. And also with Mark, County Engineer, you know, he's done a great job with the reservicing of our roads, the petroleum prices helped us greatly, been able to add additional monies, and also the bridge replacement on Fields Road, which will finally get done this year, and hopefully in a month or so, but the state has paid for that, and that could have cost us about four or five hundred thousand dollars, I believe. So, so altogether, as our team, Commissioners, Judge, and, and all the rest of the staff and department heads, as you said, all of us working together and really watching what's done, because we don't have a lot of room to gain extra income. We have to really watch if, if we're getting gains on property tax or whatever, you know, we really have to watch and judge, and like I say, going down to the charitable organizations and all. I, I know everybody's not happy probably with the result, but we do the best we can.
Commissioners Castlin and Commissioners Wathan, now you know why Commissioner Colver gets as much road fund money in the east. Look who he's kissing up to right now. Any other question or comment? There being none, this hearing is adjourned.